Seven o'clock, I called meeting to order, let's rise. Bruce, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just as a reminder, if you have cell phones, please turn them off. Roll call, please. McKeever?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Me?
Here.
Trucca?
Here.
Sherick?
Here.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Vote?
Here.
All set.
Here.
Okay, we need a vote to move the public hearing on zoning changes to October 26, 2021 at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Is that the one on the 26th?
McKeever?
Yes.
Sherick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Vote?
Yes.
All set.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, before you, you have the minutes from April 20th, 2021, June 24th, 2021, June 25th, July 6th, July 20th, August 5th, Special Counsel Meeting 1, August 5th, Special Counsel Meeting 2, and August 13th, 2021.
Can I make a motion to collectively, all of them at once?
Well, first, does anybody have any additions or corrections? Now you can make your motion.
Were the corrections made that you mentioned today?
I saw that email this morning.
I saw that email, and I just wanted to make sure they were addressed.
I'll make a motion to collectively accept all of the minutes listed from April 20th, June 24th, June 25th, July 6th, July 20th, August 5th, August 5th, and August 13th.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Greeting permission for visitors to speak, anybody would like to come up to the podium, please state your name and your address.
This is directed at the mayor. You mentioned in one of the past meetings I was here at about the gas company, that there was a rate that everybody could get in on. What was that rate? Substantially lower?
Yeah, it's under, it's under 40. So...
I think Columbia Gas, it was in the last meeting, Columbia Gas, their rate now.
It's on our website.
It's on our website, Chuck.
Okay.
Yeah, but if you call me, I can, you know...
I just want to know how to get on it, because right now it's like 60...
Call, call, see, call up to my office, and then I have your phone number, I'll call you.
Yep, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. If anybody else, mayor, would like to get on that, if you could call your office at 419-562-6767?
The extension 223 or 224, either one.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
We were fortunate to be able to negotiate all the current rates, and the natural gas prices have just...
So we're locked in.
Oh, two years?
Yes.
You said two years?
Yes, two years.
Okay, thank you.
I'll touch on that, Dan Wireball, 1092 Martha Avenue. I thought we were, you were in it unless you opted out.
Well, as I repeat, you are in it unless you opt out. If you haven't opted out, check your gas bill.
Okay. I didn't want you, everybody start calling you. But my, my understanding is you were in it unless you opted out.
Everybody, everybody is in it unless they opted out. If you have opted out, that's a good clarification. If you've already opted out, and you want to back in the lower rate, just call our office. Check your bills, it'll tell you what your rate is right on there.
And I, and I just have a suggestion for everyone to, after the rate, I think it said December it comes in effect, or January, whatever.
I have December.
Keep an eye on your bill, make sure you are getting that rate, because I went like two years, and I was, I was, it was actually the same company, but it was a different rate, and I thought I was getting it.
Yeah.
And we, we, I think we finally got it straightened out, but, but things happen, and, so just keep an eye on it, make sure, you check on the, on the website, make sure that rate is what's on your bill, only takes a minute, so.
Yeah, if you, if you have trouble reading your bills, just bring them up to City Hall, and we can help you with it, too.
Thank you.
I have a question, not about that, do I need to go to the podium?
Uh, no.
Okay, I figured it asked. The law director position. Have we heard anything about them pushing forward to find somebody to fill your spot when you leave us? Because we're going to be on a lurch if we don't have somebody quickly.
My, I'll, I'll speak to it just a little like now, my understanding is, thank you, my understanding is the Republican committee, who, since I said is Republican, is planning a meeting on October 5th, which is the earliest possible date that they can vote, and, yeah, so, you know, there's a five-day gap in there, obviously, but the, the prosecutions that's been handled with Matt's office, and they will also serve if there's an issue that arises during that gap. But by ORC, they, they have to wait five days, I don't really know why that is, especially when they know when the date is coming up.
So we're not going to get anything passed through this way after that point?
Well...
But it, we had a little issue before, where there is no stuff that can be, legislation that can be done that's not passed through the law director's office and okayed by the law director. So if we don't have one, no legislation will be finalized from that point until we have someone.
Yes, but Matt's office at the county will be serving on our behalf, and our first meeting is an October 5th meeting. We should have legislation, any legislation that gets requested between, out of the committee meeting on Thursday, should be prepared in, in front of everybody before that October 1st date, so...
So they have some idea of who they're going to go on?
Oh, I have no...
Does it have, I mean, that's what I'm asking.
No, I have no idea what the...
Are you working on this?
Yeah, I have no idea what the committee's going to do, but I'm just saying that if legislation's requested on the, by the 23rd, it should be ready and prepared out of my office on or before the 30th, so that on the 5th, you'd be able to pass it if you needed to.
Right, I'm just worried about after that, after you leave. I was looking at that today, I mean, since that has come up before, legislation has to be approved by the law director's office, that's not the county.
Yeah, and what happened last time, and actually, Matt and I, I met with Matt the other day, because we were kind of trying to, you know, relive that, the committee was unable to appoint someone, and then it went to the mayor, and the mayor appointed someone temporarily, and they hired Dave Keller out of Guyan at that point in time to, to serve in that capacity. My understanding is there's at least two or three people that have expressed interest to the committee.
What's your type, what's your job description say? I thought there was some specific stuff to your job description, like where you live.
Yes, you have to, you have to reside in the, in the city, to be elected, you have to reside in the city. The temporary appointment, there's a little bit of gray area there, intent to reside, that sort of thing, but that would, does a determination that the Board of Elections would, would make and approve, but, you know, there are at least, at least two that I know of candidates, and maybe a third.
Mr. Myers has a question.
Is there any provision that allows us to hire outside counsel from your last date until the date that somebody takes office?
There's nothing specifically outlined in the ORC about that, and, and you're correct, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's an awkward position because of the mandatory five-day waiting period, which, you know, I don't know why that's there, especially for this position, you know, I, I don't know, but there's nothing that specifically says you can hire outside counsel or anything like that.
Or anything that says we can't.
There, that's it, there is nothing that says you can't, and that's why we went ahead and made arrangements with Matt's office to...
So they're going to handle routine things as well?
If, if anything explodes, or sued, or whatever, we have standing agreements with outside counsel for other things, unions and personnel issues and human resources issues and things like that, and that's Jonathan Downs' firm out of Columbus, and Drew, Drew Pierceall and Mr. Downs, so they'd be available to the administration, because those are pre-existing legal relationships that exist. If there's a personnel issue or, you know, some weird thing that happens during that five days, but my recommendation would be just don't do anything. No, we should, should be fine, like I said, the, the timing, we should have your legislation done before, so that you're ready to go on the 5th, and, and most of those five days are over a weekend, so, well, not most, but two, 40%.
Is that okay, Ms. Sherick?
That was as much of an answer as someone gets.
Okay, all right.
I can talk longer if you want.
Anybody else?
Without going around in a circle, I don't think so.
All right. We have communications and petitions. The sale of property at 1411 North Sandusky Avenue? Excuse me.
Sorry, why haven't you brought this over to the office that needs to be referred to the proper committee? It says, Busiris City Council, the Busiris City Planning Commission met on Wednesday, September 15th, 2021. It is requested following items approved by the planning commission be submitted to the appropriate council committees for review. Approval of sale of property located at 1411 North Sandusky Avenue, the deed had restricted the sale of the property contingent upon city approval. Planning commission recommended approval of the sale with the condition that the adjoining properties to the south maintain the ingress, egress easement on the property. And you also have in your packet behind that letter is the specifics for that, with the quitclaim deed and...
I'll, I'll give you a detailed explanation on Thursday, I briefly, it's a restoration hardware building next to Sunoco?
Couple doors down from you.
Up near you.
It's the what?
Couple doors down from you, used to be the...
The old video store.
Richardson Restorations.
There you go.
Yeah.
Got you.
Yeah, it's that property, and...
That's what I remember.
Yeah, we, we don't know really why this restriction was put in the deed, but it has something to do with the gas station and trucks getting in and out and all that, so...
Do you remember the name of the video store? Do you remember the name of the video store?
Classic family video.
Giant. Classic was over here.
Move to refer to said committee.
Public lands and buildings.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We're all, we knew about video stores.
Standing committee reports, Mr. McKeever?
I don't have anything for tonight, for finance or public lands.
Public lands.
Or finance. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Public lands and buildings, Ms. Sherick?
I have nothing for this evening.
Health and safety, Mr. Myers?
No report.
Economic development, Mr. Vote?
Nothing new to report.
Service, Mr. Trucca?
No report.
Traffic commission, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, make it, no report.
Wow, all right.
Quick and fast.
Well, since there's nothing to approve, report to city officers, Mr. Mayor.
I do have a report for that, and we, thank you, Madam President, we recently welcomed Aldi to our business community, he's somebody who's been out shopping, beautiful store, great investment, and I think if you look at our three chains, our very large national chain, Oldie, Wal, Martin, Kroger, I'm sorry, thank you, sorry about that, they, three of the largest in the country, so, not too many towns...
The Verces can boast that. If you throw in our specialty retailers like Coopers, Carlys, Center Street Meats, and of course, those, as you get out of town, there's even more, we've got a lot of good options here. You throw in all the dollar stores with groceries now, it kind of hearkens back to the day where you had all these neighborhood markets, and so we thank you for all of our retailers, national, local, for investing in our community. COVID, I hate to be the, you know, the guy that bears the bad news on COVID, you know, I'm sure you've heard, Delta variant is spreading, and our hospitals are, healthcare workers are overworked, the hospitals are full, many queuing up for rooms that have COVID, so just, just, just get that March and April 2020 mindset where we weren't really sure what was going to happen, just try to, you know, do the best you can. Again, if you haven't been vaccinated, it's, the hospitals are full of basic, over 90% of non-vaccinated folks, or if you haven't had the, if you haven't had COVID, you know, those folks also have the antibodies, so if you're vaccinated or you have had COVID, so, those are, those are not what we're seeing in the hospitals, so, bottom line is this, try to, you know, do your part and get vaccinated, it's, it's for you and for all the people you love, and, you know, we've, it's touched here at our family at City Hall, and, you know, it's, it's very sad when it does, so. This update I got from Avita, 90% of the patients in our system are unvaccinated, 70% of our ICU patients are COVID patients, 55% of all inpatients, that would be med, surge, and ICU, are COVID positive, and this, this is, you can see this all the way in Ohio Health Systems, too, and all the way down to, to the Columbus hospitals, too. Use the emergency room just for emergencies, they're asking, do not go to the ER just to get a COVID test if you're having symptoms, this is causing long wait times and backing up the emergency department, so, if you need a test, they have options at Avita, and hopefully you can pick up a test at the library, and many of the retail pharmacies have them, too. So, a couple more things, I, things of interest, we have a Busiris Brownsbackers for all our Cleveland Brownsfatch, which I'm sure every one of you is here, except for this knucklehead here.
Hey, me and the mayor's, we're members.
You bonded. We're bonded.
I'll take the, I'll take the lines, thank you.
Oh, boy, well, there's one, there's two in every group now, and so, if you want to join, there's a facebook.com/brownsbackersworldwide, go dogs, right?
Right.
And, yes, and last but not least, how are we going to replace this guy sitting right up here? We've already had, you know, we're already biting our fingernails over that, it's not just his expert law ability, it's ability for, to see humor in everything, and to be cool under pressure, and, was that a tick you developed or something? So anyway, we are going to, and besides all he does for the community, my goodness, the movies, how are we ever going to, thank you, Rob, from the bottom of our heart, we are going to miss you, and we wish you the best of luck as a immigration judge, and I know you're going to be, you have a heart for the poor, you have a heart for those in, in need, and you're going to be perfect in that job, so, thank...
The federal government wants to keep you busy right now.
And if you, if you ever get bored, come back, we'll find some work for you.
I appreciate you, thank you very much.
Thank you. And that's it for my report.
Okay, thank you. Safety service director?
Yeah, Jeff's got a report here, let me, this isn't on the report, but Edgewood Drive, for all of you who live out in that area, it's just about finished, and it looks incredible, they did the RMH and McKeever's and Kimmerlyne's did a fantastic job, well, yes.
Did that get that cover overturned?
No, no, this is, just now, just finishing up, we, we have, we're not doing the cover on that one right now.
Okay.
So, the, matter of fact, the mailboxes haven't even put up, been put back up yet, but they're out there planting grass seed today, and it really, really looks good. We had a referral, the ambulance building, which is the north fire station, we want to refer that to public lands and buildings and finance. Do you want to do that before we go?
So moved.
Okay.
Smack it in.
All these in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The airport project is underway, they have a 90-day for completion, they're about, started last week on that. The traffic light on Sandusky and Beale will be a four-way stop as soon as the weather is there, some, we've had some issues there with, with the rain today, it's going to be repaired, it got hit by a truck, if you remember that.
So it's temporarily...
Temporarily, yeah.
Answer my question.
Yeah, that's it.
What about this pay for all of this?
Yeah, I noticed, that's what Jeff was trying to say here.
Okay, thank you, temporary. Gotcha.
Yeah, Driven Excavation, they're, they're the folks that got the contract for the parking lots and street garage, and they're, they started on parking lot behind Dillinger's and Crazy Fox today, doing some work there, they're going to be doing the street garage in about a week, and then first week of, second week of October, they're starting on behind the Legion, and they're going to make good progress, we should have every, every one of them done this fall, according to Driven. Sunday is a special day at Pickwick Place, is a bicentennial event called the Johnny Appleseed Commemoration Ceremony, and Pickwick Place, I don't know if you were out there last week, they have what's called Flannel Fest, there's a huge crowd, and they're going to have it again this weekend. The Johnny Appleseed Commemoration will have some speakers, it's going to last an hour, both days, 1 to 2, and then about a month from now, the Bicentennial Commission will have an entire day of activities at the Port Busiris Airport, that's on Saturday, October 16th, from 8 to 5, and there's flyers around, they got a lot of things going on, commemorate Loretta Shimler, who was the first female director of an airport in the United States, so we're very proud of her, she's buried here in Holy Trinity, and she was a World War II nurse, there's lots of good, they actually did a movie about her, too.
Which we'll be showing.
Yeah, yep, it'll be fun. And last thing, on that same day, Spooktacular is back, and I know many of you have been there, it's a big, big event in the city, it's sponsored by the Fire Department, with many, many donors that contribute, and from 4 to 7, we try to at least feed every kid at least a hot dog or two, and, and maybe scare them out a little bit, but lots of fun, and all the, all the shelters are full, and we pass out a lot of free stuff, so, we'll remind you of that, so, and that's it, I guess that's both of our reports, Madam President.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Madam President.
Yes?
I'd like to go ahead and say thank you to Jeff Wagner and Jeff Dunn for getting the paving done on Rose Court, and also to Jeff Dunn for doing the overlays, the blacktop overlay on Wayne Avenue, that street was really bad a week ago, and I went to Jeff Wagner and, and Jeff Dunn, and at any rate, he's got it all done, and it really looks nice out on Wayne Avenue.
That's why we call him Jeff Get Her Done.
Well, we got her done.
I'll pass that on.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Atlick?
No report, just kidding. No, I, I have no report, but I do want to say thank you to the community and, and obviously all of, all of you guys, it, it is a very special feeling when you get elected to an office, even, you know, just a local office like this, when you see, you know, most of the town vote for you, even some of the people that you put in jail, vote for you from time to time, so, it, it's, it's a great responsibility, I, I would leave you with one thing to consider, when, when you hear from your, your constituents, when you hear from five, or 10, or 50 people, keep in mind it is just that, it is five, or 10, or 50 people. There are roughly 12,000 people in the city of Busiris, some of whom you never see, and some that you never hear from, and some that are living in abysmal conditions, even in our community, that, that we think is, is so great, and it is, and you don't hear from those people, so, as you go through your meetings, and you hear from people, and you hear from sometimes the same people, keep in mind that, that you're elected and you have a responsibility to those people that you don't hear from, and, and they're, they're at the courthouse every day, I see them, I, I invite you to go down, see arraignments, go down, talk to people, it's, there's a different group of people, and, and there are citizens, too, and we as elected officials have a responsibility to try and take care of them, they don't necessarily have a voice, except for us, so, thank you very much, it's been a great pleasure, I'm out of here, no. Thank you.
For everything. Ms. Schiffer?
Thank you, Madam President, I don't know how I follow that.
Make sure you make a phone call.
Okay, I do have referrals tonight, I, Rob's going to have to do some legislation before he leaves, but it's for one of his employees, so, we have the 2022 Ohio Crime Victims Assistance Grant, and the 2022 Victims of Crime Act grant, that we need to create with the necessary categories and objects, and we'll need to appropriate the funds necessary for the first quarter of the grant period, which begins October 1st through December 31st, so, I took a stab at, at some numbers, and I have those ready for Thursday, so that we can get legislation done, I, the last I talked to Sam, and I know he's not been available this past week, and I haven't either.
Yeah, you know, we may have to prepare that legislation and leave some blanks that you fill in, maybe as late as Tuesday, Sam's not coming back until Monday at the earliest, and so he will have those numbers from the state, but he, only he will have access to those on Monday.
Right.
So we may just have to prepare...
Basically, just, just, I guess all I really need to know is because, or, the items in the Victims of Crime is only for salary and benefits, so we only have personal services there, so, you know, I'll throw a first quarter number in there. The other one, I don't know if he applied for anything for materials and supplies, because we moved some money this year to do it, otherwise that'll just be personal services, too.
Yeah, and, and it, it shouldn't be the same as last year.
And that's what I was thinking.
All those numbers, but he'll have the numbers for what the state actually gives us, so the requests are going to be roughly the same, but...
And we can adjust if we have to.
Right, right, so we'll just, we'll leave them, and we'll just bold that and make it easy to edit on that Tuesday.
All right, okay, that sounds good, and that's the only important thing I have for tonight.
Do we have a treasures report?
Need a motion.
We have to, make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry.
And I can second that.
Okay, thank you very much for keeping me on task.
You're good. Yeah, me and her, I just didn't want to interrupt you, but... She was on her roll.
Yeah, yep.
Keep on going, don't, don't stop now.
Okay, we had a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. How about treasures report?
That was emailed to us.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay, to accept and file?
I'll say.
No, you said it first.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And, Mr. Mayor, do we have anything from the police chief or fire chief that you know of?
No.
All right, I need a motion to accept the city officers' reports?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any visitor input regarding the reports of standing as special committees or the city officers' reports?
They ain't moving.
Okay. Anybody feel the need to recess?
Mr. Stone would like to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Why is it that every two years, we clean the house?
That's just the way the Ohio revise code.
But is, well, can it be changed? In other words, do we have to have all four wards up for reelection every two years, and all, is there something that can be looked at, where it's maybe two wards this year, and hypothetically, two wards would be this year, two wards would be next year, so that way you have some continuity in, generally, dude, basically, same people.
Continuity in politics.
I'm sorry.
Continuity in politics.
Well, I guess I just hit, I think you see, this year, for the most part, we're cleaning the house.
Yeah, there, there is a process to stagger some terms, one is obviously through a charter, which I don't think there's any real interest in that locally, but, but no, there is a way to stagger, and the one... that locally, but, um, and now, there is a way to stagger, and the one position that is specifically mentioned, the council president position, can be turned into a four-year position instead of a two-year position. So there is some that can be done, um, not a lot, but I, I think it, have to double check, but I think it has to go to the electorate, it would have to be a ballot process to, to change that.
Yeah, I, I understand, I didn't know, I didn't know.
Yeah.
Didn't that happen once before?
Yeah, a number of years ago, we attempted to make it a four-year term, but it went down to a resounding defeat.
What, make what? For the council president?
Now.
Oh, these council positions.
Yeah.
Mrs. Schiffer?
Oh. What we had done, and I'm trying to remember exactly when we did it, might have been around 2001, 2002, uh, we actually put on the ballot to make four-year terms, but they would be staggered, so that, like, half the council would be elected for four years, in this particular year, two years later, the other four. And we put it to the electorate, and they voted it down. So, I mean, not to say it couldn't happen, you know, that we could put it on the ballot again.
Even just changing it to two years stagger, keep it at the two years to figure out a way to stagger it.
That's kind of what I'm saying.
I understand that.
Yeah.
If you keep it at the two years, then the, the city will have to fill the bill for the election.
Every year.
You'd have to have an election every year.
Yeah.
That cost a lot. That's, that cost us $15,000.
I get it.
Lots of things to be taken into consideration there, it sounds like, but definitely something to be discussed. If we did it once before, we can definitely, as I said, vote on the ballot again, so people's opinion may have changed in 20 years.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
It might, it might, if it is councils, or anybody is interested in, in presenting it, I would probably start with towns of our size, their area, you know, those ones up for Sodaski, Giani, Tiff, and see what they do. Yeah, so, that would give you a good place to start, and it's done successfully out of places. That's your assignment, Chuck.
He got homework.
If it's anything like in high school, I'll sleep right through the top.
We heard all about that.
Okay, does anybody feel the need for recess?
No.
Okay. All right, consideration of proposed legislation for the first time?
Ordinance number 28-2021, amending and supplementing ordinance 50-2020 being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2021 by the creation of categories and object lines for the local fiscal recovery 2021 fund and declaring it an emergency. Ordinance number 29-2021, amending and supplementing ordinance number 50-2020 being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2021 by appropriating from unappropriated permanent improvement funds the sum of $330,000 to the capital outlay line item within the general government category within the permanent improvement sub-paragraph, further appropriating from swimming pool funds the sum of $2,500 to the personal services line item within the pool category within the swimming pool sub-paragraph, further appropriating from local fiscal recovery 2021 funds the sum of $151,400 to the capital outlay line item within the police department category and $440,671 to the capital outlay line item within the fire department category, with both after said categories being within the local fiscal recovery 2021 sub-paragraph, further appropriating from unappropriated access television funds the sum of $5,000 to the personal, personal services line item and $30,000 to the capital outlay line item, with both after said line items being within the access television category within the access television sub-paragraph, and finally appropriating from unappropriated derelict building liability funds the sum of $22,600 to the other uses line item within the fire department category within the derelict building liability sub-paragraph and declaring Ordinance number 30-2021, and ordinance requesting the Civil Service Commission to provide a process allowing for the lateral transfer of firefighters and paramedics to the city of Bucyrus, Ohio, from another Ohio jurisdiction, and to authorize the service safety director to select candidates for firefighters and paramedics from the current eligibility list for the lateral transfer list and declaring an emergency. Um, ordinance number 31-2021 is the draft legislation for the zoning changes. That one says, "Amending and supplementing section 1157.02 entitled official zoning district map under chapter 1157 entitled zoning districts and zoning district map under title 9 entitled zoning districts under part 11 entitled planning and zoning code of the codified ordinances of the city of Bucyrus by the re-designation of the properties located at 815 Whitestone Street," I'm not reading the parcel numbers again.
Don't blame him.
"And, um, from the urban neighborhood residential district into the general industrial district, and also 760 Highland Avenue for the parcel number listed, from the limited industrial commercial district into the general industrial district, and finally 610 Whitestone Street for parcel numbers listed, from the urban neighborhood residential district into the special use district." Ordinance number 32-2021 is the draft legislation that was drawn up for the changes to the Bucyrus Codified Ordinance. It says, "Amending and supplementing Bucyrus Codified Ordinance 1151.05 of chapter 1151 nonconformities of title 7 zoning administration and enforcement of part 11 Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinance of the city of Bucyrus." Resolution number 226-2021, a resolution authorizing the service safety director on behalf of the city of Bucyrus to prepare and submit an application for a 2022 Ohio Public Works Commission grant for the installation of a new water line to Nevada, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Resolution 227-2021, a resolution authorizing and directing the Bucyrus Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio, to enter into a purchase agreement with superior sales in an amount not to exceed $296,821 for the purchase of an ambulance, and to enter into a purchase agreement with par public safety equipment incorporated in an amount not to exceed $151,351.20 for the purchasing of three new police vehicles, both purchases to be conducted without public bid by use of the State of Ohio Purchasing Program and declaring an emergency.
Man, I'm glad I brought that in here.
Yeah.
Um, resolution 228-2021, a resolution authorizing the city law director on behalf of the city of Bucyrus to enter into an agreement with the Crawford County Municipal Court for the provision of indigent defense services. And resolution 229-2021, a resolution authorizing and directing the Bucyrus Public Safety Service Director on behalf of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Pavement Technology Incorporated through the State of Ohio Purchasing Program for the added expenditure of $60,395 for the 2021 mill and pave, or street pavement sealing, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do I have a motion for the first reading to be accepted?
Second.
Madam President.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Uh, they refer back to the originating committee. Any public participation? All right. Committee report on pending legislation.
Okay, I'll go through all mine. First one is ordinance number 28-2021, finance, for finance, the line creation, committee is favorable. Finance is also favorable to ordinance 29-2021 appropriations. Finance is favorable to ordinance 30-2021.
That's health and safety. That's a health and safety.
Just the lateral transfer.
No.
That's health and safety.
We need to make a motion to correct that on the minutes? Okay. With finance on that, how much to the health and safety? If we all make a motion to correct that.
This is just the agenda.
Okay. I'll go on to the next. Uh, plating is favorable to ordinance number 31-2021 for the draft zoning changes. Plating is also favorable to ordinance number 32-2021, the draft Bucyrus Codified Ordinance 111, 1151.05 modification. Finance is favorable to resolution 226-2021, the OPWC for Nevada, the water line. Finance is also favorable for resolution 227-2021, the ambulance cruiser purchase. And the final one is resolution 229-2021, finance, pavement technology, favorable.
And health and safety is favorable with the proposed ordinance 30-2021, the lateral transfers. Health and safety is favorable to proposed resolution 228-2021, the court-appointed attorney agreement.
All right. Do I have a first to accept this report? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion, I'm sorry?
No.
Okay. Motion carries. Um, further consideration of pending legislation. Um, suspension of rules for passage of legislation for the second and third readings of proposed ordinance. Let's see, 28-2021, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of, of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
That's a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Um, Sherrick?
Yes.
Vote?
That wasn't me, that was Bruce.
It was McKeever.
Mark.
McKeever.
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
Okay. For the second and third readings of proposed ordinance...
And ask for a motion to adopt.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 28-2021?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
No.
Sherrick? Roll call.
Sorry.
Yeah. Vote?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
I like your style.
All right, ordinance 28-2021 has been duly adopted. Got the first one done.
Plenty more to practice on.
All right.
Do you need to take a break?
Yeah, I think I do. All right, for the second and third readings of proposed ordinance 29-2021, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings and, of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
You guys can arm wrestle.
I bet you can.
Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Vote?
Yes.
All set?
No.
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 29-2021?
So moved. Second.
Sherrick?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Vote?
Yes.
All set?
No.
All right, ordinance 29-2021 has been duly adopted. All right. It's an emergency, so I don't, I do it though. It is, it's on the other page. Got it. Okay, for the second and third readings of proposed ordinance 30-2021, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Myers?
Yes.
Vote?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt the proposed ordinance number 30-2021?
So moved.
Second.
It's not listed as an emergency.
Myers?
Yes.
Yes, man.
McKeever?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Vote?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
Ordinance 30-2021 has been duly adopted. Okay, draft zoning changes, does not an emergency? Correct. Okay. I think, how does that work?
This is held for first reading.
Okay.
And then you have a second reading at the next meeting.
Okay.
And then a third one after that.
So we've already done the first readings of 31-2021 and 32-2021?
Yes.
Correct.
So moving on to resolution number 226-2021, for the second and third readings of proposed resolution 226-2021, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Vote?
Truka.
All set?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 226-2021?
So moved.
Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Vote?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Resolution number 226-2021 is duly adopted. All right. Moving on to resolution 227-2021, for the second and third readings of proposed resolution 227-2021, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Vote?
Yes.
All set?
No.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt resolution 227-2021?
So moved. Second.
Sherrod?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Vote?
Yes.
All set?
No.
Resolution 227-2021 is duly adopted. Moving on to resolution 229-2021, for the second and third readings of proposed resolution 229-2021, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Vote?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Sherrod? Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 229-2021?
So moved. Second.
Vote?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Sherrod?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
Resolution 229-2021 is duly adopted. Do we have any old or unfinished business we need to address? Okay, new and miscellaneous business, Saturday, September 25th and Sunday, September 22nd, or 26th, I'm sorry. Like the mayor said, the Johnny Appleseed commemoration ceremony will be at Pickwick Place's Flannel Fest, say that 10 times fast, from 1:00 to 2:00 on Wednesday, September 29th. There'll be a health fair, followed by open enrollment for city employees for any immunizations you'd like, 7:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in the chambers. Saturday, October 16th is the Rotary Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast and fly-in at Port Bussiers Airport from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And Saturday, October 16th is also Spooktacular out at All Miller Park from 4:00 to 7:00. We have no council members absent? Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Bussiers Mill Theater also has opening night for the Addams Family this Thursday at 6:00.
This Thursday would be the 23rd?
And then they will also have a show at 6:00 o'clock on the 25th, 1:00 on the 26th. Let me switch my calendar here. Then again at 12:30 on the, or 1:00 on the 2nd, I'm sorry, I'm looking at my kids. And then again on Sunday at 1:00 for their final showing of The Addams Family on the 2nd, or the 3rd of October. So, but yes, that opening night is this Thursday.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I do.
Yes.
I'm interested in the OML, but I don't know when it is.
It's the first full week of October, 6th, I think it's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, 6, 7, and 8.
And just for...
If you get on their website, they've got the...
Registration on that?
Yeah, and if you, if you can't find, let me know.
And just for clarification, OML is the Ohio Municipal League.
Correct, that's correct, that's correct. It's a good time, very informative.
Yeah, they have, they have the agenda. And we were kind of waiting to decide whether we're going to go, but the agenda looks good. So we're going to go down probably Wednesday afternoon and Thursday, come back Friday morning. It's over Friday morning after a couple sessions, so.
So you just get... You get signed up on the website?
That's different.
Actually, no, you, um... I, I think, like, I think Rebecca would sign you up, yeah. Ray Joyce, is that how it would work?
Yeah. That's, that's how it's been done in the past, yeah.
So on the airport, did they get the big plane in where you take tours through or not?
B-25.
Yeah, the B-25.
That'll be landing at 9:00 a.m. and taking off at 3:30 p.m.
Yeah, for your 3:30.
And Fred said that the, if you've never seen it take off, it's a must-see event.
So you'll be able to take tours through it?
For $5, yeah.
Five bucks each? Yep, putting it out there.
Well, there's going to be a lot of food, and ultimately, the, the mayor was mentioning about Loretta Schimler, the whole idea of this flying day is they would like to put up an actual nice monument for Loretta. Remember, it's out there, having on display all the time, so people can come in and see it. There would be a piece, uh, when they actually get some of their work done, they're going to have a concrete slab for it that they're going to take. It's a, what I understand, at least what they're trying to get is a chunk of grain that's roughly about eight foot long and about three to four foot tall, that they'll be able to put the monument on and do some engravings on that replicate the things she did and was part of, so. Should be a really fun day, though. Be a lot of people from out of town, in town, spending their money, traveling around town. They're going to have bus tours going from the airport to Pickwick Place, to Copper Kettle, to Cooper's Mill, even Crossroads Candle, just to take the people there from out of town, through to town, let them experience the things that we have and let them enjoy it, so.
All right.
What's the date on it?
October 16th.
8:00 a.m. to 5:00.
Ohio State and a Notre Dame bye week.
Yep.
Good planning.
But it's the fall festival of leaves.
N.C.C.
Actually, there is a lot of stuff going on in our county on the 16th. There's a bunch of different things that are happening. So there's plenty of stuff to do. You can spend a little bit of time at every event, you can get your enjoyment. But definitely bring the kiddos out, this should be, the flying should be really fun for the kids. There's going to be a flying group that's possibly up to 70 planes that'll fly in on top of the static displays that they're already going to have there. So lots of different planes for kiddos to look at and tour and walk around.
If anybody needs pancake tickets, see Doug or myself, or any Rotarian or Kiwanian.
Go to a Kiwanian first, though. Uh, and don't forget to, there, you know, if you're getting, there is the auction for the griddles that we're using that day, one, or there's three chances to win a 36-inch Blackstone griddle.